Good, please join me in a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, roll call, looks like all council staff is present. Alright, we'll go ahead and move into any changes. Haven't been told and seeing come out on an email, so we're gonna assume there's no changes. And now we're on to consent agenda and few items there and would entertain a motion for a consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda. Second, alright, we got a second and we'll go in any conversation? No, go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All post, same sign, consent agenda passes, thank you. Guest presentation of the LC SO is next on the list here. Lieutenant or Sergeant?
Sergeant, don't make me a lieutenant.
Sergeant, okay. Oh, it must be special.
Show up in the sheriff's office sometimes.
Okay.
You're welcome to walk back here too.
No, I didn't eat my face. Good evening, everyone, my name's Colin File. You probably have noticed that I am not Steve Framby's or Brian Hardy. They were both busy this evening and so they asked me to come present for the sheriff's office this evening. I am Steve Framby's counterpart in our program section, except I supervise all of our contracts with our timber industry. So I'm typically working in the woods for a service with the Land Force Protective Association, your land management, Corps of Engineers, all those organizations. But I get to be here, so it's good to see you all.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. I'll be completely honest with all of you, I've never done this before, so you'll have to cut me some slack.
We haven't either, so.
We're all just making it, right?
Just making work.
Yeah, so for the month of April, LC SO had six traffic citations, six traffic warnings, five crashes were investigated, three arrests were made, and a total of 112 complaints or incidents were investigated for a total of 153 hours spent within the city of Middlesbrough. Not a ton to report from this last month, which is normally a good thing. Lots of false alarms at residences, police alarm activations going off, lots of business checks. We took reports of four or five vendor vendors at Loves', which as you can imagine is pretty common there. And then we did have a series of vehicle break-ins and I was looking to see where those occurred at, but a shotgun was stolen from a pickup. And so we were just asked to remind everybody to please lock your vehicles and store your valuables, and especially firearms, inside your residence, so. Other than that, not, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the normal stuff, hit and run at the gas pumps at Loves'. Courtesy call for smoke at Wachang. Somebody was arrested on a warrant for their arrest. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel? No? It felt, it felt light?
Yeah.
I had to say.
Not a ton, Lieutenant Hardy went through and there, yeah, there wasn't.
Stuck right to our hours, so that's good.
This month, which is a, which is a good thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to tell you more about what I do, I don't want to take up your guys' time if you have other agenda items though, so.
A few, but why don't you give us a quick overview?
So like I said, I supervise our mountain patrol and marine patrol programs. And so we're starting to spool up and get busy with the summer recreation season coming up, so. Getting our, we have one full-time marine patrol deputy, getting, getting him spooled up and we hire a seasonal backhand. I get to go out on the boat sometimes when I'm not stuck in an office, so. Yeah, water's still very cold and there's lots of hazards in the water this time of year, so if you're dealing with your schools or any, you know, especially children, make sure life jackets and just using proper safety precautions around waterways and boats and stuff like that. Fire season is always a big deal in Lynn County these last few years especially, it seems, it seems like since 2020 it's been much more busy on the wildfire front, and so that's been taking up a lot of our time and resources during the summer. So I'm heavily involved in our search and rescue program, it's part of my duties at mountain patrol. I'm fortunate enough to get to work with our search and, our volunteers with search and rescue, they're rock stars or unpaid professionals. So if you guys are out and about and going hiking or camping or anything like that, of course, the standard reminders of make sure people know where you're going. You have a plan, if there's a trail log, please sign it, take lots of water. Blue Pool is, how many of you have been to Blue Pool before? It's one of the most beautiful places in the county and unfortunately, social media has blown it up and so we're always up there for rescues and injured folks or people that decide they want to jump into a pool and don't realize that there's a 10-foot rock shelf at the bottom of the cliff and hit the rocks instead of the pool. Yeah, so yeah, just be wise out there. Cell phones are an incredible, incredible thing though, we, we're seeing a lot more rescues nowadays than we are actual searches just because of the cellphone technologies that's in vogue so far, so, yeah.
Cool, alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick question regarding your marine patrol.
Yeah.
What waterways do you patrol?
It's a great question, so as you probably all know, Lynn County stretches from the Willamette River on the west all the way up to the Pacific Crest Trail on the east. So we have a lot of mountains, a lot of high mountain lakes. The Willamette River is actually patrolled by the Benton County Sheriff's Office, they have a contract with the Oregon State Marine Board to patrol those waterways. Our heaviest waterways in terms of activity are Foster, Foster Reservoir and Green Peter Reservoir. And then Clear Lake also up on, off of Highway 126 is in Lynn County and that sees a ton of un-motorized boating traffic up there. So we've seen an explosion of non-motorized boating recreation over the last several years. Yeah, kayaks, paddleboards.
Does Marion cover San Yam then as well?
Good question, so we kind of share the San Yam River, yeah. So the, the San Yam from the Willamette up to Jefferson is covered by the Benton County Sheriff's Office even though it is not, you know, that's the Lynn and Marion County Board they'll cover up to about Jefferson. Past Jefferson, it's kind of depends on who's available and willing to respond, but most of the time it ends up being us or a fire agency if there's a, you know, rescue situation on, on either the north and south end of the San Yam rivers.
Okay, so Marion's not really, they're busy elsewhere in their county?
Detroit takes up a ton of their time.
Oh, right.
As you can imagine, so Detroit Reservoir is their biggest reservoir, half of Detroit is technically in Lynn County, but that marine board have contracts with them for the entirety of the reservoir. So if it's on the water in Detroit, it is the Marion County Sheriff's Office that controls that. As soon as you get on land on the South Bank, then it's, then it's my problem, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks Sergeant, appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you all for having me, you guys take care, okay?
Alright, thanks for keeping our waterway and our forest safe.
You betcha, thank you guys.
I know, it's fine, I've seen you shot at the neighborhood watch.
Yeah, just one coming up.
I'm Michael, I'm the services coordinator, I've been doing about seven, eight years now, I've probably had some good other meetings, but I figured I'd just get two pictures, I didn't want to hand out my card to you guys. If you have events, I'll obviously like the neighborhood watch that when you get to hold on me and I get someone for notice to go out there, but any other kind of events, schools, anything they want the sheriff's office to be at, I'm the event coordinator, so. Feel free to give a card if you ever want someone to come, not to birthday party, anything like that.
Awesome, alright.
Spent a lot of time going to schools and getting those clothes, summer cans, that kind of stuff. Michael also does the scheduling, we usually go through Steve, but he also does the scheduling for the radar trailers and stuff, so. Yep, he brings them out and sets them up for us, so.
Alright, cool, well, thank you very much, alright. Alright, Dave. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and have a public hearing, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And tonight we're holding a quasi judicial public hearing regarding the applications proposing both a zone change for specific property and a site development review for a new park in Middlesburg. The meeting will proceed as following, we'll have an opportunity to read disclosures, staff will be presenting. And then if anyone in the audience or online wishes to address, they have that opportunity to address the council and any issues they have, they have three minutes for that. And then finally, we will be, there will be a rebuttal, which is the city's, is the applicant, so there'll be an opportunity for the city to respond to any issues that are brought up or concerns. And other than that, I think we're gonna do the disclosure statement.
All persons testifying will be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address. The city development code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings affect are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicants an opportunity to respond to that issue may preclude appeal to the land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, the continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Good, thank you. So any questions for council? Do any members of council wish to declare potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Any members of the council wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? And being that, does any member of the audience wish to challenge or bring up a jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter?
There's no one online.
No one's online? And that does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or the ex parte disclosure of any member of the council, which they didn't bring anything up, so I think we're clear on that. Why don't we move to the staff report, Matt?
Okay, good, thank you mayor, fellow council members. The project before you tonight, you've all heard a lot about, and so I'm going to keep this presentation very short. You're very familiar with it, tonight's project relates to just the park portion of the larger transition parkway project. And there are two applications before us tonight, one is for zone change. The property is currently, features a general industrial zoning, but that needs to change and we're changing it to public facilities because the general industrial zone doesn't permit parks. And besides, public facilities is probably a better fit for what we want to see on that property anyway. The second application is for a site development review for the linear park that you can see here on the slide. Now, I'm not going to walk you through all the features of that, but just as a quick refresher, it features a 12-foot multi-use path, a berm that's going to be used for screening, both noise and visual screening of the industrial areas to the south. It also features some seat walls that are shaped in a way that form three different small plazas on the project. The project is fully consistent with all of the applicable criteria and development standards. The staff report walks through all those in great detail, so I'm not going to go through them right now. We have additional slides at the back of this presentation, should you have any questions or want to see any more detail on those. The Parks Commission did review this, as well as the Planning Commission, and staff in the Planning Commission recommend approval based, we have a sample motion here on the screen. That concludes my presentation.
Alright, thank you, Matt.
Mayor, I would, I would just add if any of the members from the public may be viewing this later at some point, if they want to see the complete report, they could look at the Planning Commission
packet or.
Recording.
Recording from the Planning Commission, if they'd like to see the full details, if we're not sure tonight.
Perfect, thanks, Kevin. It has applicant testimony, but I think we've cleared that up. Any public testimony? Anyone online?
Still no one online.
Alright, then I think we're on to.
Close the public hearing?
Yeah, any, any follow-up questions or anything for staff before we close out? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing? And then we do have a opportunity to talk, if we want to talk, discuss, we also have a motion up on the screen and that was also included in your packet. It was recommended from our Planning Commission, recommendation to come to us.
I move that the council approve DC 24-01 and SP 24-02 and adopt ordinance 211-24 for the zone change.
Second? Alright, we got a second, any further discussion? None, take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All post, same sign, alright, motion passes, thanks for the report. Alright, this is opportunity for public comment and I open the floor to public comment.
Still no one online, sir.
Alright. And council member and staff comments, I had something on here. Before I move that, does anyone else have any report, comment? No, okay, we got strategic plan update, so I believe at your, at your sites there, there's the strategic plan 2019 to 2023, so it's, it ended last year in, I mean, in the sense that we're still following it, but it's needing an update. And so, you know, basically, we need to evaluate the, you know, updating the strategic plan and, and I would, I guess my recommendation would be for council to go through the strategic plan between now and next council meeting, or maybe we bump. Yeah, so, so you got even more time for your homework here, is to go till July, just because our next meeting is going to be potentially need to be shorter. To give you time, there's no rush, but I think we need to go ahead and make some decisions of where we want to go with this if we do. And these are our guiding principles for us moving forward with the city and it helps staff as well guide, you know, movement of what we're, you know, trying to accomplish and do for our citizens in our city and to look after them. So with that, we, in the past, we did this as a staff, as a, together as a council, we did that. There are consultants out there that are very readily available to take our money and to, to go through this with us hand in hand if we want to. So those are things I would want you to think about as you go through this and as we have further discussion, probably at a work session is probably where we'll end up. And to discuss where do we want to go, can we do this in-house, I believe staff feels that we probably can accomplish that unless a lot of, you know, ideas or suggestions come from our work session that drives us above the, you know, the capacity of our staff. So again, we just need to look at this, I've gone through it a little bit, I've referenced it in the past in some discussions. There's definitely some things that probably need some cleanup dates changed, some new, you know, projected goal setting. And so I think this will be really worthwhile to do and do that through a work session, so. Any questions to myself or staff regarding that and that plan?
Over the course of the years, since this was published, have we received any public comment to come on it?
Okay. None?
I would say the only public comment we've had is that people appreciate that we reference the strategic plan and our budgeting and other aspects.
Okay, so that's your homework and then we'll come back, we'll have a discussion probably our next July council and just see where it takes us with that and then we'll just keep moving forward.
So we gave you, you took copies tonight, I believe you all received copies, but it was several years ago. So if you don't want to take this copy, you know where yours is and you have it, feel free to leave it, but we thought everyone might benefit from a new copy. And it is online as well, if you want to look at it on the website.
Perfect, alright, thank you. Moving on, city management report.
I'll let Janelle start with the project update.
I had a quick update on some upcoming projects, our street maintenance projects that are planned for this summer, we'll do some crack sealing and I guess the neighborhood, we're looking at a number of streets and that was listed in the project update memo, but so I won't list them all, but multiple streets in the city. We'll also do some park, some crack sealing in our parking lot and walking path at the park, so we'll, that's too small of a piece to do on its own, so we're gonna combine it with our streets this year. And then the surface treatment, right now we're looking at the West Park Becker Ridge Phase 1 and Hoffman Estates neighborhoods, but it will depend on the pricing that we get back from the contractors because we do want to stick with the close to the amount that we budgeted. There's also some additional considerations with slurry seal because of street closures for that 24-hour, well, 12-hour period really is more what it's like. But that does make some, for some challenges with people getting in and out of their homes because these are residential streets, so. That's what we have in mind, but the project will be refined a bit more before we actually get to construction. B Waverly Drive Cox Creek Bridge, just wanted to give you a quick update on that, I know we've talked about it before. We did receive a grant to replace the bridge, it's federal funding, therefore it has to be delivered by a certified agency, which we are not, and Lynn County is, so they have agreed to deliver, to manage this project for us. They'll be hiring a consultant, that selection will likely be in June-ish, it'll depend on when they get that, our request for proposals out and get through that process. We'll be involved with evaluating and selecting the consultant as well, and they expect to award that, this is for the design, sorry, not construction, for design. The award will be later in the summer and then they'll get going on the design. Some other projects in process, I don't have any detailed updates on these, but just know that the Woods Road Multi-Use Path, the Old Salem AC Waterline abandonment project and the sewer feasibility study are all in various stages of being worked on. The first two are really just getting restarted again, and the sewer feasibility study needs to be complete by August. And it's on track. Transition Parkway update, just some schedule information there, we do plan to have our bid advertisement on the 30th of this month. And then we'd be doing a bid opening at the end of June, award in July, contracting in August, and notice to proceed in September, that is the current plan. We do have the ability to modify any of those dates, of course, as we go through the process if that becomes necessary.
Council meeting start time, June 11th, we have a goal exception with the county that begins at 7:00 PM, so we would ask council to consider one time changing the start time for our June 11th meeting from 6:30 to 5:30 with that. And then Alan, I know, one of the things to keep in mind is, I'm not sure how if any counselors want to attend that, how that may impact, we may need to do a little research on that. Normally, more than two would be a.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're attending, you know, anybody can go ahead and show up and listen, but if we're trying to have multiple people speak on behalf eventually of a matter that would be within the purview of like city business, you know, is that a, you know, is that a city meeting? That's something that we would probably prefer to avoid, so I guess the best thing would be to, if you have interest in attending and just listening, you know, that's fine, if you think that you would want to be speaking, coordinate that first with Kevin and I so we can make sure that we're understanding what the limitations on that might be regarding public meeting laws, because we just want to stay well clear of that as it is a possible issue.
So I would look for concurrence from the council of modifying our start time for June 11th to 5:30. What exactly is the purpose of the county's meeting?
That's the goal exception for our new rule.
Okay.
To provide access to city property.
So the, the process for that will be, Planning Commission, we heard by Lynn County Planning Commission at 7:00 PM on the 11th and then the following Tuesday at 10:00 AM, it will go to the Board of Commissioners, if everything goes as.
Yeah, that, that's, they're prepared to go that quickly, there's, there's some things that are outside of control of anybody that could cause delays, but we hope they can stick to that schedule.
Don't we have a joint meeting that night too?
No. That's coming up next.
June.
Just a reminder, June 10th, 4:00 PM, we have a joint meeting with the City of Oregon. So to start out as a joint council meeting, we move to executive session to discuss, I don't know. Just a reminder, so we will send an update out to you as a reminder, but just wanted to make sure I might have that still on their calendars for that.
It's always on my radar, are we gonna get fed?
I know we had discussed, I don't think so.
Darn it!
The Indians aren't planning to go back four to six.
Okay. You talked about food. Alright.
He's okay with it, so we're eating, we can't talk, so we're gonna meet you.
Okay, are you gonna say anything, we're good there on the attorney's report? And we're, just to be clear, we're all good with the 5:30 on the, on the 11th? And, and then just let staff know or Alan know if you plan on going to that, the, the meeting with the commissioners?
Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners, it'd be great to know both.
Either one, and the, the Planning Commission is, is the day before, is that right?
The Planning Commission is on the 11th, which will be Tuesday.
Oh, the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the council or the commissioners go the next day.
The following week.
Following week, but at 10:00 in the morning, so it's, ones in the evening, ones in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah. Both are public hearings, so people can show up and speak at any one of them, but we were just hoping to make sure we understand which one of you folks would like to speak, make sure that we're.
I will back up.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, city attorney's report.
Yeah, so the only thing I was gonna talk about was just our wholesale, we've relapsed, give you a just pick and term update. They came in last month, told you a lot about where they are, why they want the property, and what they're trying to do. We're now about, just really almost, about even two months into the project, but things are moving really quickly. We talked about we've got a hearing coming up, Lynn County Commissioners, that's the kind of primary, open-ended to-do item before closing that needs to be accomplished, that's outside of the control of ourselves as the seller or the timber lab as the buyer. With that being the decision maker in Lynn County, we're all working hard, pretty positive that we've got all the evidence that we need, should have a good outcome later in June. Technically, their condition period goes, extends all the way into September, but by all accounts, they're, they're motivated once that, that big issue is, is addressed that we work to resolve the other outstanding items as quickly as possible, as they're, they're eager, eager to move into a closing position. So keep you further updated as the summer moves along, but we should have good monthly progress reports here through the summer.
Thanks for all the work in front, they sort of front load that and hopefully it goes really smooth. I don't see anything on the unfinished business, so I think we're good there, and then on to new business, Cola.
Right, so this request is for adoption of a cost of living increase for fiscal year 2425, which is going to affect on July 1st. Based on our, on council's adopted benefits compensation policy, we look at our annual wage adjustments become effective July 1st based on the Consumer Price Index of the period of January to January, so the most recent one was January 23 through January 24. Typically, the city utilizes the lowest of the three CPIW classes this year. It is the US city average of 2.9%, and the highest of the three was classes of 3.7%.
It is the US city average of 2.9%, and the highest of the three was classes of 3.7%. Proposed budget to calculate a cost of living increase at 3%, given the information we had available to us at the time we began drafting the budget, what we were estimating, thought it would come in. Council does have the option, based on that policy, to elect an amount lower or higher than our CPI year discretion. Last year's CPI was at low of 5.9 and a high of 6.3, and we provided a 5% increase. Adoption of the COLA, just wanted to remind you, excludes myself, Assistant City Manager, and our Community Development Director positions, which are executive staff positions. So the costs associated with the proposed COLA, which is proposed currently in the budget at 3%, will clear it and reviewed in the proposed 2425 budget calculation, we'll share with you in the budget agreement.
Did you say that doesn't include you?
It does not, it does, the COLA does not include. You guys addressed our COLA in that one, okay. So, so we recommend consideration and adoption of the COLA as, as budgeted for fiscal year.
Alright. It's budgeted, we talked about it. I believe that's what we actually gave staff as well in, in that, so.
I move that the council adopt the COLA as budgeted.
I have a second, and we got a conversation. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Okay, motion passes. I just gotta say, Matt, you, you just have fun with the, you know, adding stuff to, I love the COLA. That was creative.
I gotta try to keep these meetings lighthearted.
Yeah, it's like, that's good, that's good, so, alright.
Normally makes the public attend, too, but it didn't work today.
Darn it, for game on. Alright, Janelle?
Alright, the city engineer position. So as we, we discussed this in our budget meetings last week, so this position is part of the overall succession plan that we've been talking about. The piece you haven't seen yet until now is the actual job description. So you have that in your packet. I wasn't planning to go through the job description itself, but it's based on my current job description with removing the Assistant City Manager part. We've decided to name it Engineering Services Director slash City Engineer, just because, as we talked about, the budget meeting, the director position levels, making those kind of equivalent within the city. And the funding for this was budgeted in what you reviewed last week. And so requesting approval of the, of the position, and as we talked about previously, would like to move forward with the process of finding an applicant or applications and selecting a person for them to start after the beginning of the fiscal year.
Alright, thanks. It's exciting times for the city to be, you know, hiring and the movement and the change. How's the market right now for engineers? Are they, is there a lot, or is it, how's, how's your feel on that?
Well, I think we'll find out when we put it out, but I think there, there's a lot of competition for engineers at the entry level and kind of mid-level. I think that the, that the, what was approved in the budget for wages is very competitive, and will put us in a good position. I think there's potential for, I know, I, I know there's some interest out there already, and I think there's potential for other, as possible, engineers in other locations of the municipalities who are looking for ability to advance where they can't, you know, today would be interested, potentially interested in this. So I think we'll, I feel positive about that.
Agreed. Good, alright, thank you.
The position's excellent. Will this individual be part of the executive team as well?
Alright.
I move the city council approve the Engineering Services Director slash City Engineer position.
Second? Got a second, additional conversation? No? Take a vote. Signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign. Passes, and I pass. Anything more?
I would just add one, one thing that is really, that, that it's been very beneficial to us and with your selection and making the move with Softwood Griggs and Alan, and stuff, because of the abilities that it gives us. So we have a lot of abilities we never had with Forrest, and Forrest would be the first to have picked that. So one of the things, for example, was just what we did with the development of this, of our job description. Jennifer Paul with their, with Softwood Griggs, her area is in Personnel Management Law. She's essentially our HR representative, so she reviews all of our policies and stuff, so we get a little, gotten a lot of fantastic feedback from her on things. It'll keep us, hopefully, you know, on the up and up and out of troubles in the future. So having that and having experience there in the firm, also reviewing contracts, contract law for us, we see a lot of here. And it's just, you don't see that on a daily basis, but it is something, and it's really nice, 'cause Alan's our primary contact, and Alan says if it's this, go here, if it's that, go there. So it's been very beneficial to us, having those resources available to us and, and to our employees as well, so just wanna.
And we get a whole separate attorney for Planning Commission and a separate attorney for City Council, so we don't burn out poor Alan by having him come to all of our meetings, which is cool that they have that flexibility as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate those comments. That, that is part of our firm's philosophy, where we want you and our, just like any of our other clients, to develop relationships, not with just one attorney, so you're beholden to that person's availability, scheduling, ups and downs that, that may happen. And then we truly get both from an expertise level and then from a dollar value, you know, the, the right person for the right job. And we, we strive to do that, so appreciate that that's being recognized. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. I think that how, yeah, it was a little, you know, concerned, or the question came up, like a local, having local and you're somewhat local, you know, it's not too far, but, but, you know, do we lose that? And I just really feel you guys really have taken care of us well, and have a personal touch to it, so I, I think it's good, so. Alright, closing council comments. Alright, I got just a few quick ones. Just, we had a recycling event here at City Hall. Myself and Counselor Hickam and one other community member attended, so it was low attendance, but it was a good presentation and sense of information, and it's on our website, I believe. So we can visit that and get a little bit more education on recycling. There's talk, but at some point, maybe inviting them back and to be able to present, but we'll, we'll see when that happens, but that's on the website, so that was one thing I wanted to mention. And then just over the last few weeks, we've spent last two evenings together with our Budget Committee, as a Budget Committee, going around the 2024, 2025 budget, and I just wanted to thank the members of the Budget Committee, as well as council attending and staff. It was a very well comprehensive, easy-to-read document, I thought, and I thought the meetings were well structured and went, went very smoothly. That's of course our chair who led that. And I just think it's.
Staff makes it easy.
Yeah, there you go, staff makes it easy. So again, just wanted to thank our, our additional community members that were participants in that, and that was Doug, Kevin, Rory, Rob, and Dick. And just wanted to mention that, so thank you, and thank you staff for a great, great document.
To mention underneath mine, speaking of committees, we have a opening on our Planning Commission. We lost a very valuable member. Monte Harris has stepped aside. I think it's okay to share this. He shared it with the Planning Commission. He, you may have been aware, he sold his trucking company. The truck company is in his ownership temporarily, so that's taking more of his time than what he has available to do. He did say that he would be willing to reconsider in the future, but. So if you have an opportunity, if you're not aware of anyone, we do have an opening on the Planning Commission.
Okay, alright, thanks. If not, we're gonna go ahead and close this out. Alright, German, thank you.
Okay, that was all for you.
Are, are we off?
Not yet, hang on. And now you're up.